We're ready.
We're ready.
All right. Traders report.
All right. Okay, 5.1, we have a donation of $500 from the junior high PTP to purchase the subscriptions to Overdrive, which provides books in electronic format. Then 5.2, we have a donation of $6,050 from the Springfield Athletic Boosters to the boys and girls track teams for the purchase of Gil Illuminant High School hurdle. And then we also have a donation of $952 from the Springfield Athletic Boosters to pay for the boys tennis team for purchase of uniform shirts. 5.4 is...oh yes, this is the transfer that I'm asking to do for the remainder of the Energy Project needs for $584,000 through $1290, and that will be going from the general fund over to the PI fund.
All right. 5.5 is approval of items 5.1 through 5.4. Any questions?
I do have a question. I'm guessing that Sarah, you can comment on this. For 5.1, can you tell us a little bit about that donation? What Overdrive is?
Yeah.
I know you're excited.
Yeah, I am excited.
You're not excited? I know, I know.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sarah Thornberry. I'm just your librarian at Springfield Junior High School. And basically, we just purchased a subscription to Overdrive, and so it was a donation. That's not the whole... It's a lot more than $500, but the PTP donated that. And basically, what it does is provide eBooks and electronic audiobooks that students can use on various devices, read online, any of those types of things. So if you've ever...if you use your public libraries, they have a subscription, but the subscription is you're fighting for like everyone in the state for the same materials. So kids, I've been on, you know, the waitlist for some books from my public libraries for like six or seven weeks. So and I control the selection of materials for that Overdrive and administratively as well.
What had we been using?
We haven't been using anything. So this is really a new kind of thing. I mean, I've had a few eBooks here and there as I work with Jordan, but it just, you know, so and lots of like districts have gone with this across the state. Locally, Mason and Kings have had it for several years. So we had a rep come and talk to Ms. Cook and Mrs. Winter last month, and then we decided to move forward.
We didn't have any subscription to any eBooks before. That really surprises me with how...
Wow.
Well, yay!
Well, yeah, I mean, and part of it is like money, and so...
Sorry. That surprises me.
You know. So like, I had a few here and there, but there was no like systematic system, like under one system, they were like willy-nilly things. What's nice, kids can use this over the summer for summer reading, which I really like. I'm gonna keep the eighth graders in like until school starts again, and then I can just like upload...I mean, it takes me like two minutes upload, you know, or get rid of kids, you know, out of the system. So it's based on for kids, they can use it, teachers can use it, we can have parents, if they're interested in looking at that, they can use it as well.
Is this something that is just for the junior high?
It is just for the junior high. We're piloting it at the junior high, and my hope would be that we could move forward and move it, push it out to the other schools in the future.
Was this a cost per student?
It's not a cost per student. We have a set amount of money, so we spent $4,000 as an opening money, so I had seed money from various places, and then, but we can always add on to more, buy initially more.
So $4,000 got you a certain number?
Like, yeah. So I bought, I think it was 177 different materials, mainly eBooks, because audiobooks are very, very expensive. Like, for example, one audiobook for Harry Potter, I think, was $75. So, I mean, so audio is very, very expensive, where the e-text is, depends on what it is and how long it's been out, but some are comparable to like things you would find on Amazon or Barnes &amp; Noble, like price-wise.
So how does it work with the kids? Because I use it for the library. I've also waited many weeks.
Yeah, so you know exactly what I'm talking about.
So I'm very familiar with that. So how does it work, though, with the students? I mean, there is that same sort of waiting?
Yeah, yeah, basically. So what it will be, though, we'll be sending out, Karen will be sending out some things that we've been working on, marketing to the junior high parents. And basically, there's a website, and then if you came in, like either the doors, there was a little flyer, kids, if you have a QR reader, you can just scan it, and it'll take you initially to that website. I will be also putting some stuff on my school website, and we will also be integrating it through our school catalog, library catalog that we already have. So they can do a search for whatever, and then it will directly link them, it says, "View Resource," click it, and then it'll go directly into it, and then they'll have to put in their lunch code, which most kids know, and then they'll be able to download it to various devices, read it through either an app, a browser, any of those things.
But it's a certain number of copies, or...
Well, it depends on what we buy. We can buy like multiple copies if there was like, say, a large demand for that. It just kind of depends on what the students are wanting. So if I get, and I have it set up, if I have a whole, five kids on a whole, I get an email and say, "Hey, a lot of kids are wanting this."
But it's not like an enterprise-wide subscription?
No, no. It's like you actually are buying the media, the way...
And Overdrive is the platform that allows you to lend it?
Yeah, it's just a platform, yes, yes, but we're still buying...
So you have a contract with Overdrive for a, you know, period of time?
Yeah, so we just did a, basically, a two-year contract, and so we had our initial $4,000, and then we have an annual fee next year of $1,000, which will be out of my library budget, but all of that fee goes for content.
So say after the two years, your contract's up, do you lose that content?
If we do not continue, and that's pretty standard across the board. I mean, same thing with the library databases that we have, if we don't keep the subscription, it's on.
I mean, Overdrive, I mean, the library uses it, obviously, that's what Lexis uses as our digital lending platforms.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Resales, law firms, that's what they're buying, is Overdrive. So it's, I don't think there's any risk that like...
Yeah, it's a huge...
It's a high...
Yeah, it's...one thing I remember is really cool is the basis of my...
It's legit.
So it's based out of Cleveland, and I even talked to a lot of my librarian friends throughout the state and some tips on how, but rolling out at the junior high for various reasons, but, and I'm controlling, so I have control of it, so that's just librarian and me, so, but I'm really, really excited, as Lisa can attest to.
Well, I was telling her, but she said, "It's out of her budget." I thought, "It's gonna be out of the budget until I get him out to that door tonight."
I am reliable. But, I mean, yeah, so, you know, as Spronje said, it is lots and lots of places use it. Academic libraries, which are what the library world calls college libraries, they use it. You know, public libraries do, corporate libraries do, all those types of things.
But so that content you purchase doesn't expire in two years. So you keep building upon that, or...
Yeah, you can keep building on it, and there are some regulations that, you know, are based on the publisher, so if you ever listen to like, say, FBR or something, they had discussions of like, say, HarperCollins, they have what they call metered access. Metered access means it's either a time period or a amount of checkouts, and, but they tend to be less. So a good example that, a friend that is librarian at Talawanda Middle School and High School over in Oxford, she said, you know, that she had all these copies of Hunger Games when Hunger Games was super popular with the movies that came out, but like now she doesn't need like 10 copies of Hunger Games, so it expires. But that's based on the publisher, so no matter where you went to buy it in electronic format, it would eventually expire. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does our high school have any electronic subscription?
Well, it's weird, we're starting it here, but I mean, this, Sarah knows a lot, and so we wanna, one thing we've learned about these digital products is pilot them somewhere that we're gonna be able to ask a million questions and find out how it works. So, I mean, our job is when we spend money to make sure we spend it in the place we're gonna be able to pull the most information out of it, it's in this library. She does, she does see the job.
Oh, I get that. I am not questioning you.
But it's probably not in the library, that's what she means, and she's gonna correct me in a minute if I call her home.
I know, I know.
I'm just curious, is the high school using something different, or do they not have anything right now?
They don't have anything. I mean, if you look at books checked out, I mean, this library probably checks out about $6,000. I bet the high school, they check out $1,000, I would be amazed, so...
So it might be something that we would consider in the future if this goes well?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Sarah would probably like it across the board, and so it's a book, but with these digital products, what we've learned is start small.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Work the kinks out, then build upon it.
And I think what has helped, when we looked at it before, they used to have a hosting fee, which means you would pay like a set amount of money, like say $5,000 just as a rapid, and you would have to pay half of that as just a fee, you wouldn't get stuff, but they got rid of that, probably because schools weren't signing on for it.
Right, right.
So that's one reason when we looked at it. Also, with the digital textbooks, kids aren't used to that in this building, so that's another reason, as well as BYOT.
That makes sense.
And the thing that's real nice about this, it has all these different apps, so it has Chromebook app, it has iOS, Android, Google Play, Chromebook, I mean, or you can just read this stuff in a browser, and then it syncs with your account.
Awesome.
As you can tell, she knows a little bit about this.
Does. I might know a little bit of stuff. Imagine that.
I was just waiting to see it on the internet.
Where would that library distinction come from right there? You learned that, thank you.
Thank you. If that made any other questions, and I'm hoping, and as I talked with Mrs. Bab earlier, I hope in the future, maybe this summer, to present formally of what it is and what we, things we have at a board meeting.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.4?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Spronje?
Yes.
Lon?
Yes.
Move on, superintendent's report, Tom.
Yes, what you have here tonight, and I like, just to give you a compliment, I like that you ask questions before the board meeting, because then you know all this stuff, but the administrator contracts, we do evaluate all our administrators through the Ohio Principal Evaluation System we're required to. Tonight, the contracts, the first two, Mr. Berger, Mr. Grubenhoff, they're assistant principals. Ms. Northguard is our special ed coordinator, Kathy Poor is head of nutrition, and those are the main contracts up tonight. Kim Northguard and Kathy Poor, Kim's evaluated by Lee Vincent, Kathy is evaluated by Mr. Pennell. They don't have a state system to evaluate them, but the two assistant principals were evaluated by the principals. I meet with the principals and go over how things have gone with those individuals. So all of the people are coming to you tonight, I vouch for their performance, the jobs that they've done, and we've offered each of them a three-year contract, and it really has a show of our commitment to them, as we value the administrators that are here right now, working with our students, staff, and practicing here. Also, we have the second reading on the policies. That we will be asking for approval. We actually had each of these in the policy committee two different times, then it came to first session, and now tonight they're coming for approval. But once again, if you still have questions about those, what we've done is we add so many, it slows down how fast you have to approve those. Those are your policies. They're not mine, they're not Mr. Pennell's, they're the board's policies. So if you have questions, and all of you collectively agree that, you know, well, we'd like a little more information on that, Mr. Petrie, we'll push it back in the first session or back in the committee. You just tell us what you want to do. All we're gonna do is give you our recommendation or idea on what the district feels will work well, but ultimately, you're responsible for that, so if you want them changed, we'll go ahead and do it.
I know there were a lot of questions. Would you like to do that, push it back, or are you okay?
Well, I think that's what, I mean, I would like to understand the answers to those questions. I mean, how would we do that? At least, I remember so...
So you wanna ask them now, perhaps John or myself can answer if we can. If this may be legal, and I can't give you a direct answer before I tell you what I think, I want to be able to give you the actual facts, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just, when I, I mean, I'll, you want me to go through them now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Like I said, the main ones I was looking at, we had the 5517, which I believe is the anti-harassment for students, and then there's a 5517.01, which is the bullying and other forms of aggressive behavior. Those are the two that, that I was reading through, and it just, it seemed as if some of the language was inconsistent, maybe potentially between the two. There's some of those things that I'll go through, but then even like in 551701, let me try to get to the point here, one of the sections, it talks about sort of the definition of harassment, intimidation, or bullying means, and it says, "Any intentional written, verbal, electronic, or physical act that a student or group of students exhibits toward another particular student more than once, and the behavior both causes mental and physical harm to the other students in a sufficiently severe, persistent, or pervasive that it creates an intimidating, threatening, or abusive educational environment for the other students." I guess my question was, I wanted a little bit more history of understanding of why the obligation is more than once, because it seemed like one time should be, you know, a violation as well. I didn't know why it needed to be, that that was one of the requirements to meet harassment, intimidation, or bullying?
Well, I...
And so I, that's just a question?
When I listen to your question, no, they're not gonna get by with it the first time. So if there's any offense, a lot of these are written by Neola, which is the legal binding piece of all these things of why they're written that way, but our discipline, the way that we do it, is very progressive. The differences with bullying, harassment, things of that nature, once they've done it more than once, then it becomes a recurrence, and it becomes a pattern of defense, and there's a history of it. That is, that makes providing discipline very different.
No, I get that. I'm just, the way it reads, I mean, that it technically, if it was only the ones that wouldn't need the definition of...
Well, and our guidelines, and it's something we talk about in policy, and our handbooks and guidelines, how we address these things are specific, that handbooks, you will have to approve this year. We're gonna bring all of those, because what we found, as we've been looking through those, our handbooks haven't always followed our policies either, and I don't know if our Springfield handbooks have ever even come before the board before. You should be approved of those handbooks, and that is something that we will be bringing, and the policy committee that we have right now is rather large, but what you see right here, we, and we didn't change anything in this policy, it's straight from Neola, but the goal is to keep it broad, so that it's all encompassing, and it meets the legal status, but as far as if someone bullies, we're gonna address it the first time.
That's obviously my concern, I just, I'm not sure where we're gonna land on these, but I mean, it is a question, even if we approve it, I'd love to go back and understand sort of, you know, I think we have, right, the ability to go back to Neola and ask these questions?
Absolutely.
Just about why it even puts that in there.
Well, even if you approve it tonight, and then...
That's, we can go back.
I would rather you email me your actual question, John and I, and then what I do is send it to a man by the name of Norm Burkhardt, he sends it up the ladder, so to speak. It might take us a little bit of time to get your thing back, we can bring it back, Jane.
Yeah, and that's what we were sort of discussing, and I'm comfortable with that, provided there's just sort of a follow-up, I just would like to understand.
Sure, what's a great question.
Yeah, the other question, I'd, sorry, I had more.
Can I, or just on that one question, I'm a regular pal with John on that? The language harassment and intimidation is also a code?
Right, the Ohio Revised Code.
So some of this language is so set, you know, we're not determining this, this is our Neola language, but for example, if a student is found, is disciplined for harassment or intimidation, that is coded that a certain way, and that is part of the reason you see the language, because that, the way that exists requires a repetition.
Correct.
And that, so I realize what you're saying, that...
Yeah, just read, again, just lay person reading it, I'm not an expert in this.
Well, I know, as a mom, I read it too, and I do it one time, and it's too many.
Right, that's all.
But does that mean it qualifies as harassment, or harassment and intimidation?
There's not a free pass the first time, how it reads right there.
That's what it should be done.
But do we have to have that in policy in order to be like, to be covered?
We need to be consistent with the way it's coded in the state system.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, and then, and I, and again, this is one of those things where I only know about it from the communication perspective because of the way we report it on our website and our bullying.
So if you look at our Code of Conduct policy, then it's gonna lead to, as possible, for setting that up in the district, which then is gonna say, the first time they, if crimes, the punishment's gonna match the crime anytime it happens.
And that's, that's my only point, I just don't want there to be some sort of loophole or something, and somebody, you know, "Well, until I do it a second time," it's not, that's all, so...
I gotta pass.
It's not...
It's tough to identify bullying and harassment, it is very difficult, but it's not as easy as you want to think, but no, they don't, if it's reported, investigated, and they're found guilty, they, your next kid will definitely target it.
So you can, I'm fine with that particular one, I mean, that's, but anyway, there's some other questions I had, though, because it also talks about, like in that same paragraph, it talks about what's, has to be sufficiently severe, persistent, pervasive, like, I'm just wondering, who determines that something is those things? That it would rise to this, it's the administrators?
Yeah, and it's based on, a lot of times, what I talked to a kid about this today, we talk about malicious intent, so when you get into these acts, it's, if it's malicious, it's definitely looked at much more different than if the child's horseplaying and someone's significantly hurt, because a lot of times, parents will say, "Well, you know, I just threw a pencil at him," and I'm not saying we have those types of issues here, in 20 years of being in the building administrator, it's an experience, they threw that pencil out of anger, big difference than I accidentally tossed it across the room and it stuck in someone's arm. So there's a lot of different levels of, "No, you meant for that to be there, it wasn't an accident." So it's just, there's a lot of different things. Our administrators, the administrators, and in our meetings, we'll calibrate, so that we make sure from building to building, it's consistent and progressive in terms of how we can discipline.
Like, that was just more of a question, and then the only other things that I saw that he's raised, potentially inconsistency, was that in 5517, someone aged two, has more definitions, and has bullying, and one of the things that it says, the bullying that it's, it, I'm trying to figure it out, bullying rises to the level of unlawful harassment when one or more persons systematically or chronically inflict physical hurt or psychological distress on one or more students or employees, and that bullying is based upon one or more protected classes, that is, characteristics that are protected by federal civil rights, federal civil rights laws. Because my question was about the protected classes, it just seems like a very narrow definition, and that there could be things that would rise to a level of bullying that fall outside of protected classes. And then in 5517, I think there's, at least when I read down, it talks about, I'm trying to think where I saw it, it was in this aggressive behavior section, where it's saying, you know, it's a form of intimidation and harassment, although it need not be based on any of the legally protected characteristics such as sex, race, color, national order. So again, I just, I wondered why it was such a narrow definition, and it probably has to do with following some other code, but it just, it seems odd that...
Right, some of those words, some of that wording that you just read, that was directly out of the Ohio Revised Code.
Correct.
And that's why, that's why, and for anybody that likes a sexist, you know, I mean, there are certain things sometimes that lawyers say and write into law, that then we have to try to implement in another setting, and it, and they, they almost look like they conflict, but they, they don't, because harassment is a little bit more protected class than bullying theoretically, but it's not.
Well, what I'm saying is, but it's the bullying one that says it has to be a protected class, that just seems...
Correct, right, but it's, that's what's in, that's what's in the law, the 3300 series text.
I mean, what are our, do our policies, are they, this is our policy?
Correct.
What are our handbook, I'm just trying to think, like, you know, something, I was using this example earlier, and I can say this, because I have four glasses, but if someone were to make fun of me for wearing glasses, that's obviously not a federally protected class, like, does that fall into somehow, I don't, that's why I guess, it just seems like such a narrow definition.
Well, I would do it far away from me, because then you couldn't see it.
Yeah, no, far away, my glasses, I could see it, but I don't have them on, exactly. But I just, that's why it just seems like there could actually be types of bullying that don't have anything to do with a federally protected class.
Well, and, but, but, it also, on the school side, when we have to report bullying in terms of meeting federal code and state code, it has to be, that's why that narrowing down has to be, because when we report bullying, which we're required to do by law and is on our website, that has to be just those specific things that meet the federal laws, and that's why bullying, that's why that's a narrow that. Now, there's other harassment and bullying, bullying type events occur, and we do those, it's just, that's not a reportable offense within the bullying section. So that, that's why bullying unfortunately has to be so specified, because they, they have, it has to be a very small piece of the federal law.
Well, and from a building standpoint, bullying isn't simple, and a lot of people, if two people get into a fight, and then one person's just teasing someone, they're bullying, and the administrators will have to say, "Not necessarily," and it's a very difficult conversation to have, because there are a lot of different elements of things that happen that are not bullying, so they do spend a lot of time on training and things to understand harassment, bullying, and just, you know, play out misappropriate behavior, but if you look at our, you have to approve it, our Code of Conduct, particularly at the high school, it's very specific about what they suspend for, and when they do it, and how they do it, it's very specific, so we actually narrowed it down last year because it was redundant itself.
Because then there, you may just shift between buckets, essentially, right? It's not, but it's not sort of covered, it's just, and the shifts from being bullied to harassment, which is the more broad definition that says it doesn't have to be a federally protected class. Again, that's all I'm trying to just understand.
We get a lot of questions like, "Well, I heard so-and-so got three days suspension for this, my son's getting hot," well, and we have to, that malicious intent's a big deal when it comes to discipline. Just being sarcastic to a teacher is different than being malicious verbally to a teacher, even though they might say the same thing, so it's, it's very different, the way that they do it.
Again, I'm just, I'm comfortable that there's not any sort of gaps.
Well, we're trying, I'm not gonna promise you there are no gaps, we're trying our best to get all the gaps still, make this as equal as possible, and we often get the kids in with all these things.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's great, I mean, I think it's obviously something, at least personally, I feel very strongly about it, you know, I love that, you know, here are things like the Rachel's Challenge, and so I just, I want to make sure that our policies aren't leaving some sort of gap in there that is inconsistent with these other messages that we're sending, that's all, so I, I appreciate the help, you know, perspective, working through why they should be written a certain way, and I'm comfortable...
But there is a new one on there, about what is harassment of administrators, and that's a new one, right? And that does not say that you're gonna free-trip, you're bullying the superintendent, not even once!
You can take that back to policy.
It's wrong the first time!
Yeah, we'll take that to policy.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.5?
Second.
Second.
May, can I just, one other question before we vote? Circling back to the administrative contracts, these are, are they just expiring contracts?
Yes, they're all expiring, and there are no salary increases.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to...
Right, that's a good question, I'm glad you clarified that, because people always wonder that, when the administrative contracts are up.
Roll call.
Bab? Yes, Spronje?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Director of Human Resources and Special Education, has time to do that, or?
Uh, I can.
Well, who else?
Mr. Pennell.
John doesn't want to.
Hell, he has one more board meeting, and it's gonna be his name on there, not Lee's.
I'll, I'll, I'll let you do it, Tom.
You know what, I wanna make sure you can do it before you get the job, so you know.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your consideration, approval of the Title One elementary summer school positions that was talked about in work session, an increase of a full counselor position for the district, we talked about that at Lanes at the last board meeting, where we're bringing, you know, full-time counselors to every building now, so it's just one full-time counselor.
Actually, if I could comment on that, and you don't know this, because we didn't get to talk about it, that would not, we, it's, in essence, well, no, in essence, it's not gonna be a full-time cost to us, because what's happened is, the part-time counselor at Clear Creek wants to go full-time, so the SI, and that part-time counselor now would be full-time, she was already full-time, she'll just stay there all day instead of sharing with Clear Creek, and then the part-time person at Clear Creek goes full-time, so it saves a little on benefits instead of a whole new person.
I forgot, I forgot to discuss this.
Well, the problem is, we, we can't really change it, so to speak, but it still looks that way, but financially, it's not a full $60,000 or $64,000 for a new person.
So what, what was it?
I was asking for a whole, a full person to hire, somebody brand new.
What, what, what do we, I thought we had one counselor that did half-time at SI and half-time at Clear Creek.
And then we have another that does two. She would do two days. Right now, we have someone four days at Clear Creek, not five. We, and so this person will now do, then we have someone that's five days. But the problem was, SI's counselor was two days at Clear Creek, and then we had a part-time person for two days. We didn't have anyone for the fifth. Thing is that Friday typically is the most important because that's when we do preschool IPs, when we don't have the kids. So we need someone at our early learning center full-time.
So are we hiring?
No, we'll not be hiring anyone.
We're not hiring anyone?
Well, you're, you're just increasing the guys. We're increasing...
We're increasing hours of the people that are there.
Two part-time days, one full-time.
Yeah. And so the SI counselor now will just stay there all day. Which for that building, when we looked at alcohol abuse, suicide, and things of that nature, we have got to have that.
Absolutely. I was just trying to understand with the people that were there. I thought that it was one person. I didn't realize we already had two people who were part-time.
Correct. But it is my speculation that will be an additional call, so it's not bugged into the five-year forecast. It's just at this point, we have to have that, or I wouldn't ask for it.
I agree. I agree. Okay.
Sorry, Todd.
It's okay. Um, 7.3 recommend approval of the, um, athletic game day operations staff pay rates. Uh, this is one of the things that we do at this time of the year. And then 7.4 are the available approvals of personnel items for this month.
Any questions? We have a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.4.
I'd like to say so.
Sure.
Um, you know, with this, there's a lot of things that we're approving with this. And I think with this, every time that we go through the approval process, we put a lot of trust in all of the people that we have in place to do the hiring process. So whether it is John, who's going to be our new HR person, Tara, Todd, who's Mr. Petrie Floyd, sorry, whoever it is, we have a lot of trust in the people that we have hired. And so as we vote on these, that is just showing the trust that we have in you guys, that you have all gone through the processes and done the job that, um, we know that you've done the good job. So we appreciate what you've done and we trust that, um, everything, in everything that you're doing. And I, and you've shown us over and over again that you do do a good job. So I can vote with confidence. And all of the votes that we do, I think are very well thought through and, um, yeah, vote with confidence. Go ahead.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Like you're a business manager.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration, my lengthy report that we spent a lot of time in, in work session on. Uh, 8.1 is the approval of, uh, the community reinvestment, uh, tax abatement, uh, to allow the city to enter into that agreement with Victory Wholesale Group. 8.2 is the approval of the compensation agreement between the City of Springboro and the Springboro Community School District that pays us for the, uh, as required by law, the 50% of that income tax that they will reimburse it from to offset our loss of the, uh, the real property tax revenue. 8.3, uh, recommendation of approval of the resolution of urban necessity to replace the walk-ins and freezers at, uh, Springboro High School and the junior high. 8.4 is recommendation of a farm lease agreement with Mike Farm Enterprises, and that should save for three years. Uh, we changed that and unfortunately, we forgot to change that act around there, uh, for the 14.24 till of the acres that was, they pay us $110 a month for, or $110 per acre per year for that. Uh, 8.5 authorize the business manager to begin the process, uh, the bidding process to obtain up to $150,000 of paper work, uh, with the main emphasis on Clear Creek in five weeks. Uh, and, uh, recommend approval of the contract that Pro-Am College provided hosted voiceover IP system, uh, for two years.
Yeah. What's going to say? You going to add another one?
No, I don't need anymore. I just want to make sure.
Cause we have to go back and talk about it.
You're making his blood pressure go up. Come on.
Uh, is there a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.6?
A motion.
Second then?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yeah, there any questions?
We exhausted these.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Board member reports, comments, questions, announcements, and future considerations. Uh, approval to grant full retirement pickup from the Springboro Board to Todd Petrie through STRS and Tara Floyd through SERS beginning August 1st, 2016. Any questions?
Any comments? I don't want us to wait until we're...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah. 9.2, approval of resolution to request greater accountability and transparency for the Ohio Charter Schools and to invoice the Ohio Department of Education for past charter school deductions from state funding of local district. 9.3, approval of items 9.1 through 9.2. Um, do we have any questions?
Really? Questions?
Comment?
Yeah. On the first one there, I mean, I know that the individual in the community forwarded us an article from the Daily News. I know we've done some work a while by, while back going and doing sort of its own sort of survey of, uh, the districts in the area. And I'll just read from the, the Daily News here. It says, "It's become extremely common for Ohio school districts to pay both the district and employee contributions for superintendents," um, which is often referred to as a pickup. Of the 48 contracts reviewed, only three superintendents, Huber Heights, Sue Gannell, Valley View's Early, and Springboro's Todd Petrie, joined Edens Curry in paying their own full 13% contribution. Um, I'm supportive of this, uh, this measure. I mean, I, I think it's, um, I don't know what the right word is. The fact that we're one of, you know, of all these districts, um, we're sort of not compensating our administrators at a fair market value. We're not talking about anything excessive. Um, you know, we were the outlier. Um, and I, I really don't feel right, feel comfortable with that. And I think that for me personally, I value the work that our superintendent and treasurer do. And, uh, and I think it's a shame that, uh, it sort of took this long to sort of, to put this in place and again, not doing anything sort of excessive, but just, you know, following sort of the, the fair market value for these types of positions. And so I'm glad to see that, uh, they were addressing this. And I'm supportive of the measure and, and supportive of the work that they're doing because they do, uh, they have big jobs and they do it very well. And, uh, I think, again, it just, it bothered me that, um, that we were sort of the outlier in this regard. So I'm happy to see the work addressed. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that also. It's interesting how this even came up because they didn't bring this to us. We requested this information from them. Um, and in doing that, um, Mrs. Floyd brought up eight, pulled up eight different districts. And we just said, just, just so we know what is typical of how many other districts, um, provide pickup. And of the eight districts of just locally, we were the only district that didn't do pickup. So this is just of the ones around us. And then, you know, we shouldn't have anything to do with D N publishing that article a couple of weeks ago because we did this in January. So when we asked her to pull this information and she sent it to us, I was just embarrassed, to be quite honest, to be the only district that it says none across the top for the pickup. And like Jamie said, you know, these are our top two leaders in our district and they do a fabulous job. And I think, um, one of the, I had asked her for, um, overall savings that they have done, over $4.5 million that they saved our district through, um, right sizing is the term they use of getting the right people in the right place, not having too many, um, not having too few kids per classroom, making sure the right teachers in the right place, the right go- I mean, there's just so many different things. And having sat at those tables for seven, well, for four years while you were here, two years while you were here, you know, I've seen it in a day and board meeting, by board meeting basis. And so to see this, that's embarrassing that we're not taking care of them. So I support this 100% because I see what they're doing, I see the academics grow, and we can't do that without the leadership of our district. Uh, financially, we're, we've only decreased the amount of money that we have, and yet our, our academics have increased. So, um, I think our staff morale has only increased. Um, the trust in our community has for our district has increased. So there's absolutely no question. There was a question in my mind even before I saw this, but when I saw this, this just gave me the confidence that we're making the right decisions. So, um, it didn't surprise me when these, it, it did surprise me when these numbers came in, but, um, it, it embarrassed me. So I apologize and I'm happy to make it right. That's it.
I'd also like to add a comment as well. You know, I'm new to the board. Been here, you know, just, just under a month already. And I'll be honest, my eyes have been open. I had no idea the amount of work that, you know, board members and, you know, Todd and, you know, you guys, Tara both do. And I'm, I'm amazed. Uh, I hope I can pull my weight too, but it's, I'm, I'm very impressed.
You don't have to.
From texts at, you know, nine, 10 o'clock at night to emails at the same hours. I mean, they're there, they're working, they're doing what is best for us. And I'm, I'm glad to support this as well, in the limited experience I have so far.
I just echo everything that's been said. We did have it a few years ago and then for some reason it went away.
Yeah, it did.
For whatever reason. Uh, I'm just glad that, you know, we were able to bring it back. And, um, you know, it's kind of echoes everything else that financially, we're so far behind the area schools as well as throughout the state. And we are making strides to, you know, to improve that in all aspects, whether it be for our staff or our administrators. So, uh, this was a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. And congratulations. We're glad to do it for you.
The other point I guess I'd make is that I failed to mention is just that we do this on such a lean administration to begin.
Absolutely.
So just it all the more reason to at least be paying, um, and doing this should be in line with the peers. There's no reason to sort of be, uh, to be sort of at this lower level, particularly given how mean we already are at the administration levels. We're already asking for more. It doesn't make any sense to be paying less than sort of that fair market value.
And on top of that, there's a lot of the districts that are getting Medicare and board paid annuity and, um, car allowance and a lot of other additional vacation days. There's a lot of other things that we're still not covering. Um, so this is not, just so you don't think we're getting the Cadillac deal here, this is just a step in the right direction.
That's what I mean. I don't think this is not excessive. I think we were clearly the outlier on the bottom.
This is a step in the right direction. I'd also like to make a statement on the charter school resolution. I couldn't be happier with this resolution. I think it is an incredibly strong resolution. Um, and I think that this is something that is really good, that our community sees that we're willing to just make a statement that we would just like accountability across the board. So I support this 100% also. So, yeah, I think that's great. That's all.
Good. Uh, do I have a motion to approve 9.1 and 9.2?
Second.
Second? Do I have a second?
Yep.
Third.
You better third on that one.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Board member comments and questions? Darren, anything further?
Um, it's late. I don't think I have any.
It's earlier than you think.
That's right.
We appreciate that. Jamie?
Yeah, I probably said too much already tonight. My mic is dying.
I gotta get all new batteries for everybody next time.
It's probably a sign that I've said too much. Um, no, I, I don't necessarily, just the usual, just sort of thank you to, to Todd, Tara, and John, and Karen, others, and just our entire administration. And I think that, especially the last couple of weeks, it's not that it wasn't evident what, what you all do, but it just, I've seen, you know, firsthand your commitment to this district. And it just gives us opportunity to once again, say thank you for everything you do for our students. Lisa?
Well, I want to welcome Darren because we just really initiated him quite well this first month. So you've, you've done a great job of jumping in and with both feet. So welcome, and we're happy to have you here. You've done a great job already. And the other thing, um, is I have experienced firsthand, um, the district taking care of my children. Um, when Todd talks about the whole child and you're not just here, um, you're not just here for academics, that's what I've experienced this week. And, you know, we talk about Springboro, and Springboro's a special place, and, um, there's just something about it and those things. That's what I've experienced this week. So I have a huge appreciation for administrators in this district that have taken care of my family and not just taken care of, um, the academic pieces of it, but the whole children and, um, cared about my kids in deep ways. So, thank you.
I wanted to thank the board for your due diligence and patience with all the emails and texts that you've gotten from me for this past weekers. Uh, I'm very excited and happy with the way things turned out. And, you know, it just shows that we can work together, even though we disagree at times. And, you know, it's, it's good. You know, I mean, it's just, you know, it makes, you know, like you said, Darren's been thrown into the fire. Well, so have I here these, uh, this past month. And, um, I'd like to say I'm stronger for all of it. I don't know. But anyway, I want to thank all you guys for your hard work and all the administrators. You know, we're on the right track. And this year's coming to an end pretty quick and it's been a pretty, pretty good year. Uh, we're just looking forward to graduation and then moving into next year or two. Appreciate it. And with that, are there any announcements or future considerations?
We don't need you to say anything.
No, you said it.
Yeah.
Karen.
When is it?
Yeah, I would love to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on.
Is that what you were wondering? I was hoping you wouldn't adjourn just yet. Um, well, two things I would highlight for next week are, are, we, spring sports are doing great, but I would just mention the boys' baseball team will play at Fifth Third Field on the 21st next week. And so that's a great opportunity to go out. You should come out here and support them too, but to go down to Fifth Third Field and support them. I believe they're playing with Code in East, I think. Um, and then the other thing, a huge event in the life of our district next week is the high school musical. Uh, more than 130 student performers in addition to just a number of people behind the scenes that make that really incredible event happen every year. Friday night is almost sold out already. Uh, Wednesday night is a dress rehearsal that is open, um, primarily to, to close family members, but really to senior citizens that may not want to come to an eight o'clock show. The dress rehearsal starts at 6:30 and that is free. And then tickets are $12 for an 8:00 PM performance on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and a 3:00 PM matinee on Sunday. So that all is happening, happening next week. And if you have not seen one of our high school musicals, you should. Our students are exceptional. And it's Footloose. Should mention that.
Okay. With that, we adjourn.